All right.
Yes.
We'll call to order the regular committee of the whole meeting. Can we please begin with a roll call?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes, here.
Connell.
Here.
Shemmers.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kerns.
Here.
All right, our first item is going to be taken off the list for the moment. That'll be brought back to you. We have some circumstances outside of our control that Bryce and his team are working with, but it'll be back to us. It just won't have a discussion today about it.
I have a question though.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, sure.
Um, we're gonna ask you outside of this. I was running, so we got the frozen base and the increment, which is all outlined in here. Taxes are still paid on the amount up to the frozen base, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then 20% above of that.
Of the increment that's created.
So it's still gonna continue to generate the same, basically the same property taxes it generates now, plus an additional 20%?
And we'll talk about that more, but he was looking at having the base at the selling price instead of the current base.
Oh.
To create more increment.
Okay.
It just helps them monetize that to then borrow. So basically, a base is whatever the assessed value is today. They put all the improvements in and then they do assessed value. It would be like 5.3 in this case, and then that, the difference there then would be the increment that we do the 80% tax abatement on, and then 20% would come to taxes. But it's a 17.5 mil project overall, so.
All right.
Trails.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to two.
Hi, Zane.
Mr. Zane Pennock.
He'll be here momentarily.
Was he eating dinner?
Yeah, I think he's busy. We have had some, some street projects going on today. Had a couple of concrete pours, opening Harts Mill Road, we're working all over town, so.
Harts Mill is open?
Harts Mill will be open Thursday morning.
For all traffic?
Filibustering right now.
For all traffic?
All traffic. Thursday morning, Harts Mill is open, they striped it today. Seeding it today and tomorrow, they have to pour a curb into driveway for the country store, RV storage tomorrow. Gonna pull the barricades, knock the detour down, open it up on Thursday, but it's, that street's awesome. That's one of the better projects we've ever done. What's that?
Ain't cracking yet?
It's cracked all to hell.
I do have an official.
But we control them by cutting the joints in the appropriate spots, so.
I do have a question for you. Is there any way that next time you shut down the bridge going westbound?
Okay.
That you can let us, or eastbound, I'm sorry. No one advance for that, 'cause uh...
I think we're like live on YouTube here, so don't blame it on me. I didn't do it.
What I think Councilmember Shemmers is trying to say is the Iowa DOT closed down the North Bridge.
Did that open up?
Uh, May 28th.
Supposed to be by the 28th.
So west is also still Memorial Day.
But they, they open it up every night until 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, the westbound is controlled, eastbound cannot. And then at night, at 6:00, they open it up.
Good old Zainer. So, I, Zane will be here, but, so like two years ago, we talked about, you know, naturally, we were doing a lot of parks planning at the time and a lot of comprehensive planning, and we talked about like upcoming transportation needs within, within Clinton, Iowa, and what were our, our main focuses. So I think what was lacking was, you know, a comprehensive pavement management plan. We've, we've got that now. Uh, we're, we're gonna update the council on that in a month or two, at, at this committee, the whole level, on our history of that and how that's going. We talked about traffic safety. We've been doing a traffic safety project every year. I know that it's mostly due to the police department's efforts and, and the public's efforts, but I think some of our projects have contributed to a, a steep decline in the amount of major accidents within the city of Clinton. We still want to do a lot more of that. We want to do some roundabouts, just a couple of them. We've, we want to continue to upgrade signal systems. We want to do manufacturing drive and bluff, so we're gonna report to you about that as well. And in addition to that, the RACE grant that'll be coming up in July. So we've got about four different committees, the whole topics to discuss, probably one per month, at the transportation planning level. And we'll wrap that all up at the end with around CIP time with a, with a formal document.
And what Jason's not telling you is it probably saves us $150,000 because this all started when we started talking about a trans, master transportation plan. Well, all the things he just mentioned are all subsets of the master transportation plan. So as we build all those pieces, we're gonna actually build our own transportation plan. And that's, that's kind of the goal in this case. We may at some point, seeing how all the cow pieces go, come back to, we may put this with a third party to finish it and tie a bow, but most of the stuff, just because there's other things that will need to be put in this, so that it's always on the shelf, and then if we're not all here tomorrow, people can pull it off and see what we're thinking and where we're going.
I got a question for you on that. Um, you said the traffic safety study, is that, are you gonna have some numbers for us to, to show the decline? I think that is very interesting and it's very important.
Yeah, I've done that, and I'll, I'll continue to report on that. I haven't reported since like a year ago. But it, it constantly declines, it's in constant decline, and we're gonna hit, we're gonna hit on a few key intersections here in the next few months, and we need to have the roundabout consultant come back for a public meeting here next month. So, Zane's topic that he'll be discussing tonight, though, is complete streets and how that ties into the Trails master plan.
We can, we can take you off the hook and we'll just, we'll just go to...
I'm not gonna make that stuff up.
We'll go to this, the 2C, and then we'll hit Zane when he gets here. So you don't have to filibuster any longer.
It was good, though.
He did a good job, though.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Kraft.
All right.
Dr. Kraft.
He's the lead Imagineer, right?
All right. So, moving on to, to, to C for the moment, the lease with the Clinton Baseball Club. Nice article in the paper today, I saw that today. Matt had some good comments, so. Here's, here's kind of where we were at. The old lease specifically stated in there, I don't remember the exact language, but it was Major League affiliate or Minor League, or I don't remember the exact term, but it said that in there. So, basically, losing our affiliation and moving to the Prospect League, although we still have baseball, it kind of nullifies the lease, just because of the language that was in there. There was also some things that needed to be updated in the lease as far as, you know, normal things with, with the landlord and the tenant, I guess you would say, is who's responsible for what and, and this and that. So, myself and Councilmember Shemmers, Councilmember Sealy, had some meetings with the President of the Ball Club and a couple of the, the folks that are on his, his team there. We had some really, really good discussions, and I think we're, we're still having those good discussions, and we've been doing that since about February timeframe. So, really, I want everybody to know that the number one thing is we want to make sure that baseball is in Clinton, period. And I think that's all of our goal. But we are, we, we do need to update and rework that lease a little bit. So, where we're at is what, what, what we thought after our discussions was, you know, we're kind of going into this season where we, it's a little bit of an unknown. Uh, it's a little bit of a shorter season, it's a different league, we don't kind of know all the parameters that are, come out of it. So we would like to, I would like to propose to you is to just do an extension of the current lease and change the language in there to say Prospect League, just so that we can get through this season, we can see kind of how things work, we can see if there's any changes, because it's been the same league for many, many years, and, and this is gonna be a new kind of journey for all of us, not, not just the baseball club, but the city as well. And it's important, you know, that we have the baseball here. So, basically, we would want to extend the current lease till October 31st, and then we would want to have a new lease signed by December 31st this year. And the reason I say December 31st, I know it's a long off from the next season to start, but obviously budget season starts in January, and that's the time when we sit down and we're looking at funding that we're putting in for the CIP, for improvements, we're looking at energy costs, we're looking at several different things when it comes to the budgeting side of it. So, what this would do is would give us a chance to see the season throughout this year, sit back down with the, hopefully the entire board, 'cause I know they have, they have a broad board with a lot of different people, so we'd like to sit down with them, find out, using Councilmember Obrin's words, find out what's important to them. We can express what's important to the city, what's important, what's important to the taxpayers, and then we can all sit down and have a lease that is beneficial to both parties. Is, that's, that's our goal. We're not trying to, you know, steamroll somebody or do anything like that or pull a fast one. We legitimately want baseball here, and I want to be able to sign a long-term contract to have baseball here, too. I, you know, our last lease, I think, was 11 years or something like that. Something that we can look at as far as the term when we're doing the negotiations, but I want to ensure that we have baseball here, not just this season, but five years, 10 years, and another 50 years down the road, 'cause, you know, I think a lot of us grew up here watching baseball down there. We want to see that for, you know, our kids and families going into the future, so.
I would like to add one thing on there, is in, with Councilmember Sealy sitting in there, we were in the war room, if you will, at no time did the topic of not having baseball ever come up.
Correct.
This was, what can we do to make sure that it stays here? And somehow word got on the street that it wasn't gonna come back, but that's, that was never even a topic of our conversation.
Yeah.
This was, this was always gonna be here.
We're not trying to farm out somebody else to run the team, we're not trying to take it over, we're not trying to do any of that stuff that's been floating around on Facebook and all that stuff, no. We, we legitimately want baseball here, it's, this is an important part of our community, and for a, a city our size to have the beautiful stadium that we have, and to have a wood bat league or a professional league, whatever it is, is extremely, extremely awesome. So, that's kind of where we're, where we're at. We, we obviously need to sit down, we need to continue to talk and, and work this and make sure we have a long-term plan going forward. But I know myself, Councilmember Shemmers, Councilmember Sealy, we kind of thought this was a, a great plan of attack going forward from here, so. I'll open it up if anybody has any questions about what we talked about or our negotiations or anything like that. Nothing? All right?
Would you like to move this forward?
Yeah, my recommendation would be to move this forward, and then we need to get it in the hands of the Ball Club so that they can get a signature on it. We can bring it back here on the 25th and ratify that before opening day on the 27th.
At 6:00 PM?
Yeah.
First pitch.
I don't know if there's any, anybody else that wants to comment on this, or if there's any citizens online that want to comment, star six, we'll unmute yourself. Yeah?
As a longtime baseball fan.
Hey, you can come up, you can come up to the mic, sir.
No, it's all right.
Okay.
I, I got a big voice, I used to be a teacher for 34 years. Anyway, as a big bat, baseball fan, I'm just kind of curious, I'm, I'm reading a little bit about this, and I want to know, is this the Northwoods League that is gonna be?
Prospect League.
It's, it's not, no, it's the Prospect League, so.
Because I'm very familiar with the Northwoods League, 'cause I, I'm, I'm from northern Iowa, southern Minnesota.
Yeah.
That's a very good wooden bat league, a lot of college players are involved in that, stuff like that. The level of play is very good, so I've never heard of this prospect.
Yeah, the Prospect League, Burlington joined this league as well. Actually, we, home opener is against Burlington, so it's kind of neat, and it stretches from, us and Burlington are the farthest west, and it goes all the way to Pennsylvania, I believe, is the, so there's many teams all within there, and I think it's gonna be pretty competitive. It looks like a pretty good league from what, from what we've seen, and my conversations with the Ball Club itself, they're pretty excited to be in this league, too, so. All right?
Well, your honor, I would make a motion.
A motion?
All right.
I can second my motion.
You wanna, you wanna keep it as a motion or do you want to make a motion?
That's an ultra motion.
All right.
Can you spell that, Lisa?
Do we, do we have a second for the motion? All right. So we, we have a motion and a second to, to move this forward, which we'll have to provide this to the Ball Club for them to, to peruse and sign, and if there's any other discussion? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell. Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Let me do one thing, hold on one sec, let me do one thing.
Excited for the 27th?
I'm just gonna stop sharing and then that, now you go ahead. Yeah, I was, I was reading online, Prospect.
And they split it into two divisions now, they only had one in about 22 degrees.
Two more teams.
I don't know, maybe they got to make a new person. I don't have a team for it. I thought it was a day.
All right, hello. Sorry for my delayed absence.
We heard you were busy.
There is a bit of road construction going on outside. Probably all aware, but, so help me up. For those of you I have not met, I'm Zane Pennock, Assistant City Engineer.
And I'm your master clicker. I'll move the slides on your call.
Okay, all right. So, you can, Jason already talked about transportation master plan, so that's kind of, that is just a reminder. I spoke with you guys a couple months ago, maybe a couple of years ago at this point. We started talking about the transportation master plan, getting that rolling. Um, the big thing that, and my component of that is the complete streets. So from that original conversation, we then created a Trails Advisory Board, which has been hard at work, and one of the continued things we keep bringing up and keep talking about is complete streets in that committee. Because although that is the Trails Committee, what is a trail but a small road for people? And, so you can flip to the next one, Matt? Uh, so here's some verbiage, this actually comes right out of the Smart Growth America Complete Streets, but if you flip to the next one here, there's some highlighted portions that are very hard to see now, but.
We can see them.
Uh, if you want to take a second to read that, I'm not gonna read it out loud to everybody.
You know, I need to do one thing, sorry about that, Zane, hold on a sec. What I didn't do was this real quick. Now we're back, now we're sharing. I forget sometimes to share. There, you can look at the big screen thing.
Even better. But yeah, so, you know, this, Smart Growth America is a widely known organization, so complete streets are not a new and novel idea that we came up with out of nowhere. This is something that's being done everywhere, but the important parts to note about this quote, or, you know, this statement are, "The needs of people and places, safer for all people of all ages and abilities, better support overall public and economic health." And the goals of the Transportation Agency is going to meet how a community prioritizes its transportation spending. So I think as a department and as a city, we've been, you know, we have been prior to, prioritizing some of these things more and more, as we see more bike trails going in, we have the sidewalk program that we've been working on, we're making good steps. So as part of the Trails Committee, you can go to the next slide, Matt? Um, you keep going here.
That was a nice picture of 19th Avenue North.
Yeah. So this is, I'll give you a quick little snippet. Basically, a complete street doesn't necessarily mean a full overhaul of the road. It can be done with existing infrastructure, just adjusting lanes. The two, two-way, two-lane, four-lane to three-lane conversions are perfect example. You know, we made the road safer, we made the road better. The one thing that's lacking from that component is a sidewalk or a trail. But 13th Avenue North is a convenient example right now. You know, this summer, we're gonna be working on, you know, converting that from four-lane to a three-lane, we're incorporating some bike, bike trail aspects into it for future consideration, and I believe earlier you guys passed the resolution, hopefully, to support the trail grant for 13th Avenue North. So, that would, once that is completed, that would be a complete street. We have room for cars, we have room for people, we have room for trails and bikes. So you can flip on, Matt?
Hey, that's, we had a fire there, yeah.
Yeah.
A controlled one.
Yeah, a couple just different types of bike trails, you can keep going here. I think some of this is, yeah, so this is the important map. This one right here. So, the Trails, let's say, the Trails Committee has been hard at work talking a lot about complete streets, and one of the things we did a few years ago, probably about a year ago now, was we prioritized all of the proposed trails, well, prioritized all of the future trails in town. So, this is obviously just what we've been talking through in our committee, looking at, okay, where would trails be good, and where would trails, you know, create a complete streets environment? So all of the lines on here you can see are, you know, connecting major points in town, connecting the different areas of town, and we have a different, we have two different priorities there. Blue is existing trails, green is top priority, and then purple is the secondary priority. I think overall, there were 20 trails that were prioritized, and we split it up 10 and 10. Those trails were ranked based on safety, connectedness, and demand. So the demand factor, safety and connectedness are kind of self-explanatory, but demand what took into account how much it would connect, what type of facilities it would connect, what types, what areas of town it would connect, and if, you know, a particular trail connected more areas of town or more points of interest, it got a higher score, obviously. So these here are what the committee came up with, and our top priority was actually 13th Avenue North, so, which is the trail grant we're gonna be working on. So, all, this is all information that comes straight from the 2032 Comprehensive Plan. We already talked about bike trails, we already talked about complete streets. So, we're really just here to talk about the next steps and what we need to do to make sure that we're continuing to follow these plans, and specifically trails and complete streets, like I get to talk about. But, okay, that's an old slide, Matt.
I'll stay right there.
Yeah, so the, the, is it, so I submitted the, the map, and all I'm asking for you guys is to, you know, basically accept the map as a, an updated priority. We have an old Trails priority list, most of which comes, this is what, what spawned this, with just a few additions. And, you know, just making sure, the Trails Committee is gonna, is going to continue to work on complete streets and continue to draft that policy, which will be presented to you guys at some point in the future, when it's done, maybe when construction season slows down at some point. But that's kind of the expedited little spiel I had. I welcome any questions, sorry if I kind of ran through it, and I apologize for running late.
You're running time.
Councilmember Obrin.
Well, first off, I want to, you know, Zane is, is also, besides being Assistant City Engineer, he's an avid biker, more avid than I am, but I'm a biker, too.
Except when it's high winds.
Except when it's high winds.
I tried 15 miles.
But, when, on our committee, there are people coming to our committee that aren't actually on the committee, that are having input into what this looks like, and, and when he talks about connectivity from one piece, one point of interest to another point of interest, we're going from everything from park to park, to gas station to gas station, to grocery store to grocery store, to, you know, all the different parts of points of interest that are in our community, and how we can get people going on their bikes from side to side. If you go right now and you go on Riverview Drive, I'll guarantee you there's 10 bikes there. They have been there for a month already. There are 50 people that are walking there, and the people are getting more, and I think it has to, has a lot to do with everybody's feeling that they can get out more now, you know, because we're, we're past those things of 2020, and this is gonna become even more and more need-based, and we, he talked about demand. There is demand out there right now, because there are, are bikers on city streets that are looking for that trail, especially when we talk about 13th Avenue North. Oh, there, there's constant people that I'm, you know, moving around in my car or my truck, you know, as they're on that, so what we're doing here, this is not something that's gonna happen in the next year, but it's gonna take us, you know, 10 years to get there. But, once we have this plan, these, these, all these little things are gonna start coming up for funds that are gonna be available, that we're just gonna say, oh, hey, we can apply for that, boom.
Yeah, and to expound on that, this isn't, you know, this map that I'm presenting is not inherently gonna lead to hopefully looking for large amounts of funds or grants or, you know, financial commitments directly to these plans immediately. This is just so we have a guide in the future, if like, oh, we're gonna resurface this road, well, maybe we can incorporate some of these features into it. You know, and this isn't all gonna be, you know, separate trails behind the back of the curb that require grading and 10-foot of concrete. A lot of these can be incorporated into existing pavement. You know, if the road, we have plenty of roads in town, you guys have all driven on them, that you drive on, you go, I can drive all over this road, 'cause it's, it's wide, it's massive, there's loads of room, and roads like that are prime candidates for this type of work. You know, you can narrow the lanes to within driving standards, 12-foot, 13-foot lanes, and still have room for bike lanes, or, you know, whether it be a protected lane or an on-trail lane or a shared lane, these are all aspects that can be included. You know, things like, if you look up here, like South 14th Street and 13th Avenue North, those are two big ones we've been talking a lot about. If you look at South 14th Street, you can draw a straight line all the way from Mill Creek Parkway, all the way to Lincoln Boulevard where you connect to the MRT, and you pass Bluff School, you pass, pass the element, or Whittier Elementary School, the middle school, Eagle Point Park, Georgia Morris Park, the Arboretum, there's a couple prominent churches along that way, and all of those would be directly connected via one trail. You know, obviously, there's some challenges, like with every trail, but things like that can be a huge asset to the community. You know, they make things more walkable, they things, they make things safer. You might no longer have to dodge bikes that are on the road. There's plenty of bicyclists out there that don't follow the rules of the road, whether they're driving the wrong way, whether they're weaving in and out, you know, trails would potentially help with these issues. And also provide more room for walkers and runners and, you know, get people off the road and provide more safe refuge.
Just a real quick question, and you kind of tapped, or it's gonna take you a little off here, but you talked about trails and you had obviously streets in there. How are we doing sidewalks?
Sidewalks, so we had our sidewalk program last year. We updated all of the sidewalks. We, I don't think we have a sidewalk program for this year, but we made good progress last year, and, you know, the more and more we drive around, the more infill we see. We just did a project, actually, I guess the sidewalk portion of this year was, we did a bunch of infill up in Cameron Oaks. So there was about a thousand-foot of sidewalk we put in up there that connected different parts of that neighborhood, and, you know, it was just unconstructed sidewalk. You know, the ground is ready for it, all we had to do was put it down. So, we're constantly fixing handicap ramps all across our projects, so, you know, there's still loads of sidewalk work going on, and we're making good progress on that.
And I think that'll be a big conversation of not only this coming CIP, but all future CIPs, is, you know, what, what do we dedicate as far as dollars towards that? Because we've, we, not for tonight, but we could have a long conversation on, you know, whose responsibility is for sidewalk, what should we be fixing, it's the owners, but that's gonna be part of all this, too, and I think, though, that the more creative the Trails folks can be and have multi-modal, because if you look at all, every city that is, is being successful nowadays, you have things to go do that can be on your bicycle, can be walking. We haven't even really got into addressing ATVs, but really, it's, it's sharing space with everybody, and what's the safest way to be able to map that? Of course, someone challenged Zane to come up with 26.2 miles of trail, so.
I'm still working on it. Huh? About 20.
Getting closer.
Yeah, so, you know, town's only so big, if I can expand into wit, maybe we can.
We call Don, see what he says.
Another thing, too, that we haven't hit on yet is, as streets are being reconstructed, and we're, you know, we're separating sewers and all that, all of a sudden, there's gonna be an opportunity to put in a sidewalk, put in a trail, and that will become part of that project where it's not a, you know, an afterthought, it's a, you know, part of the project thought, and all of a sudden now, you know, we're putting in, you know, 100 feet of trail, and nobody's even thinking about it anymore.
I always think of 25th Avenue North with the wide sidewalk.
Yes.
Was there, part of it was there prior, but then now you have the whole length of 25th Avenue, just gives a lot more variety for folks to get out and move.
Yep, and if you're already gonna be doing sidewalk work on a road, a road construction project, adding an extra five foot for trail to go from a five-foot sidewalk to a 10-foot trail, isn't the hardest thing in the world, and you already have the crew there doing the work. You know, a lot of these, they said, a lot of these projects can be done with existing right-of-way, with existing infrastructure, it's just a matter, it might just be a matter of repainting the roads. So, it can be a relatively low cost and small investment, but it can make a huge impact.
So I hear you saying, Zane, you'd like the council to move this map forward to be officially So I hear you saying, Zane, you'd like the council to move this map forward, uh, to be officially approved?
I would.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Good job.
I'd just like to say that that committee has done a good job. I was the lady on before Grant there, and they really took this far. Kind of make this work, you know, really, um, financially knowing that's not gonna happen overnight, but making sure this Trails, um, master plan was a priority.
Thank you, Councilmember Connell. Any other discussion? Alright, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes. Alright. Councilmember Connell, do you have any updates?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright. Councilmember Sealy.
Thought I did, now I forgot what it was.
Alright.
I have nothing, your honor.
Chance, Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes, sir, thank you. I have a couple.
Alright.
Judging from my email, I think the Facebook fact-checkers were off last weekend for Mother's Day, because a lot of bad things came our direction, which weren't real, but, uh, we'll move forward from there. Um, this week is Police Week, and Saturday, May 14th, is Law Enforcement Memorial Day. This year, 121 officers died in our country in the line of duty. 38 have committed suicide. Three in the state of Iowa have been killed in the line of duty. I think we're very lucky, and I, I'm very pleased with the law enforcement we have here locally, and I hope that people out on the street this week can, uh, uh, give them a bit of thanks if they see them. So, thanks to our police department.
Outstanding, outstanding. Councilmember Obern.
Just one other thing. We had a proclamation a little bit ago about Arbor Day. And we had, uh, don't quote me on this exact number, but I think we had 85 trees that were spoken for in the, uh, Reforest to Rebuild Program, um, that were given out a week ago Saturday. And marvelous, I mean, some of these things were, people were just so thankful for being able to get a tree. So there are 85 new trees in our community because of that. Um, we're hoping to go through another one. Uh, we, uh, we had a total of $7,000 that bought trees for that, and we're hoping to do another campaign, you know, going forward. And of course, we're doing the, uh, we got the branching out grant from our good friends at Align Energy that we'll be doing this fall. Uh, that will be another 42 trees, I think. Somewhere in that 40 range, anyway. So, and things are going real well. Um, we had, uh, 600 and whatever it was kids that planted a tree uh, for the third and fourth grade tree project this year, because they didn't get to do it as their graders last year. Uh, so, and, and of course, the one thing that we're working on right now is the, um, 9/11 commemoration that, uh, actually, we've got it all pretty much planned already, so, uh, we're, you know, a lot of good things going on and trees forever now.
Good. Councilmember Musman.
I don't have anything, your honor.
Alright, Councilmember Kearns.
CRDC on Friday.
True, yep. And, anything else? Nope. Alright. Uh, the only update I have is in reference to our item on the Cow. May 27th, everybody be out at the ballpark. I think they have a two-game home stand, 27th, 28th, to open the, open the season. 6:00 PM both nights. Alright, anything else from council? Alright, we are adjourned.